Boarder?
Arboges.
Present.
Jay Brady.
Yes.
G Broder.
Present.
D Homender.
Here.
S Lantrow.
Yes.
Jay Ryan. K Van Bergen Budo.
Here.
Okay, flex on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval on the minutes for three, twenty-six, eighteen. And four, two, eighteen.
Go move.
Second.
A second.
Any discussion, any correction, permission?
You're doing both?
Yes.
Together, because I would have abstained on the first, but anyways.
All those in favor? It's names. Public input. No public input. Okay, adjustments to the agenda, we have one. And it's to approve the following support staff nomination. Serini Scanzillo, I guess it is, S C A N Z I L L O. Paraprofessional, White Mountains Regional High School, salary eleven seventy-three an hour, Step One V A. And I'll pass these around.
Is this actually on Agenda Item Eight, Jim?
That would be yes. Any other questions? So. Are you non-public now? All right.
Hey Jim.
I need a motion for a non-public.
I'll give you the motion, if I could just bring up one comment beforehand. We've had this discussion before, that's not where the American flag goes, it goes to the left.
It keeps getting moved back.
It gets moved because we moved it the other day.
Oh, it doesn't matter who gets it moved, it's always to the left. It's positioned over every time. Motion for a non-public?
Okay, under RSA ninety-one, hash eight, going through, press it out.
Second.
Roll call.
Arboges.
Present.
Jay Brady.
Yes.
G Broder.
Here.
D Homender.
Yes.
S Lantrow.
Yes.
Jay Ryan. K Van Bergen Budo.
Yes.
You can go right in there. All right, take care.
Do you see me now? I wonder if they knew that. Like, I wonder if they positive. You can't see me?
No, I can see.
You can see me now? Right now, I'm in there?
Oh, it's too late.
I guess more than before, then here, now, there's that, this, the, tag, there are.
I am pissed.
What'd I say, anything?
Oh crap.
Could see your head, that's all.
Yeah, I tried to block it off.
I have some. For my guests.
Are Spartan. See, I was thinking, this is Spartan. We are Spartan, right?
Correct.
All one word. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, guys. That was awesome, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to see you in a minute?
Nobody threw chairs?
Go move.
Second.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
I did.
Indefinitely, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, the student representative report. Superintendent's report.
I'll start with Michael Curtis, the futures program update.
I'm kind of, uh. It's tough because I need to kind of hit this, but I want to be over here.
You want me to hit?
Sure, thanks.
Need your clicker.
So, I talked to Dr. Anastasia, and, um, like, we agreed that this would be a good time to kind of give you an update on the futures program. Uh, I believe in your minutes, or like, in your board packets a month ago, he had some information too. So we wanted to just kind of show you where we're at first year. So one of the domains of the futures program is the ninth grade transition. So we've been doing this for a few years, and we continue to try to, um, make it just a little bigger and a little better. So the last couple of years, we've been able to take the whole ninth grade class during the school year. So thanks to our administrators, Mr. Barry, giving us two days during the school week to bus our ninth graders to GORM. So they, they go to GORM, and they work with the AMC staff and the White Mountains staff, and primarily our ninth grade teachers. So like, week one is, it's very, I think it's great that our, our ninth graders get two days with, to build those relationships, get to meet their ninth grade teachers. This year, we incorporated kind of like a leadership journal. So the students, they went on a hike starting at about ten, they got back at about four-thirty, day one. And about every half hour or so, they would do, in a group of ten students, they would do something that was pretty much image of a grad related. So we kind of incorporated image grad this year. And then they, they wrote some journal entries, and we reviewed them, and used that as a teaching tool over the two days. So I thought that was pretty cool, that the AMC kind of brought that piece to their curriculum this year, and then we continue to add next year. We talk about dream boards, so we want them to start thinking about how they use high school to create open doors and create opportunities. And then, at night, we have like the life of an athlete, uh, sorry, the life of a Spartan program. So we're trying to bring in lancers and pirates together, and kind of talk about what, what it is to be a Spartan, and kind of what to expect in high school, um, some of the hidden curriculum things. We got our freshman advisors at, at this event, so they can get the, the freshmen ready for homecoming and, and the fundraising, and just kind of think for year, what their journey is going to be for four years. Okay? And next year's class, they're going to go with the tenth and eleventh. So we've already secured the dates, and, and have the, and the AMC, they use New Hampshire charitables as, just so you guys kind of know in your role, that the AMC is kind of going out and raising money, in a sense, for, uh, local students. So that's kind of our partnership with the AMC. Okay, so that's one piece of the tran, the transition domain I wanted to highlight. As you, as you're aware from like our program of studies, um, starting next year, each student's going to have an ELO as part of the requirement to, um, graduate White Mountain Regional High School. And ELOs are really kind, they, they, they're growing statewide. So we have like the Extended Learning Opportunity Network, that meets once a month in Concord. And so there's sixty educators that are at that meeting. So, you know, high schools throughout the state are really starting to incorporate these into our, our traditional learning systems. Yes.
You want to ask questions?
No, no, please.
Well, I just wanted to, to, to bring up, you know, one of the things you just brought up is that ELOs are going to be a requirement to graduate. Requirement to graduate with a White Mountains diploma?
And, and we're going to show you.
Or is it state requiring it now?
It's a White Mountains.
Okay.
And, well, there's, there's different ways you can do that. So I was just going to give you this piece, and then the next slide has some different variations. No, that's, no, that's a great question. So this year, we have forty-three students that experienced an out-of-class opportunity. From internships to job shadows, to like, even practical experiences when our, our students went to the Dominican. And they kind of mapped out how, what their extended learning opportunity was going to be. They did the practical piece, and now, I just, you know, talking of profate, we need to kind of get together and create that summary, so that Mr. Barry can, can look at the work and the evidence that we have, and, and give us that, you know, give the okay that we can have an elective credit, which goes on the transcript. And I'm going to, I'm going to give you a packet in a little bit, I guess I could probably do that now. So, um, this is an example of kind of a completed ELO. So we've, we have different community partners, and, and, you know, list is many. So I listed about twenty of our community partners on the PowerPoint, and one of them is Appalachian Non-Club. So Emily McCusker, and the, the cool thing is, like, the students really take the ownership of, of making the contact, or kind of going, hey, Mr. Curtis, I got an idea, I want to be an outdoor educator. So can, can you work with me so we can make that contact with the AMC? And, and let's see if we can make it happen. So we, you know, so that's the, and we've put some literature out there, so the community partners knows that White Mountains is, is reaching out and, and doing this piece of the educational process at White Mountains. So Emily got to go to the AMC. And she would go Tuesdays and Thursdays, she would start her day, not here, but she would drive to, typically was, um, Pinkham. So she was going towards Twin. And so from about eight to eleven, she was there, and she worked with what we call a crop rating teacher, or mentor. Her name was Lucy. And Lucy was a mountain school teacher, she was an environmental scientist who allowed, who let Emily, in a sense, kind of be her assistant. So she would take some morning hikes or day hikes with different schools, and Emily would start to, uh, she kind of job shadowed, and then she would start to, to teach part of the lesson, or part of that, that piece of curriculum that they were doing that day. And then Emily led a trip in December, she took ten White Mountains students for a weekend up to, um, one of the huts, it's in your PowerPoint. Lonesome Lake Hut. So like, what I did is I included six slides, because Emily's gone through the process. So when you're looking through the packet, you can see journal entries, you, she, she did supplement, like she, her teacher, you know, created a rubric with the school, and updated us on how she was doing. And then a big piece that our community partners really want White Mountain grads to have is the image of a grad rubric. So that's included in our ELO checklist. So as you can see, like, Emily was like, you know, again, I'm not going to give you an ELO example that's not an A+. So this is like an A+ ELO. So Emily, she was, you know, hit all, hit all the marks for image of a grad. You can see her supplemental assignments, you know, they, they even let her do AMC blogs. So when she was there, they, they, they allowed her to like get right onto the AMC website and have a piece of that, which I thought was very cool. She spoke at Spartan 101, she interviewed professionals, she created lessons, she had the weekend hike. And then one of, I thought was a big step for Emily, is she, she presented her ELO to the State, um, Association, which is a big deal, and she did that in February. So, and I just gave you like six slides, I thought they were kind of cool, how she, and then one of the slides kind of showed you the, the two, the two colleges that she picked out because of her experience. So the ELO really led to where she's, she's going to Nevada next year, um, for her next faith. So, just kind of wanted to share what, so you can, and you can see that, um, you know, Mike has to sign off on it to make sure that, that she hit her competencies and that it's relevant. And she put a hundred and ten hours into it. Any questions on that piece? So you can kind of see it's personalized learning, which is cool. So then, we have that ELO piece, which is like the internship job shadow piece. And then, again, in your CTE completers, they're going to have those, those ELO, um, that extended learning opportunity embedded into the, into their curriculum. We're really trying to, with, with White Mountain Community College, we've made some even more strides this year, I think. You know, bring in, bring in, having more field trips there, having the, there's a new president at White Mountain Community College, who's very, um, really wants to create that partnership with White Mountains. So the dual enrollment could be a way that they learn their extended, uh, get their extended learning opportunity BLATs, um, even summer opportunities. So there's a young lady that is, that wants to explore event planning. So she's going to do it, do her summer job, but have that curriculum piece embedded into it. So, any questions on that? So summer camps. So this. So this went out to all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in Whitefield, in Lancaster. We need to get, I know Jefferson is going to, we're going to need to get, Jefferson, they have sixth graders? Not anymore. So, the brochure went out to parents last Monday and Tuesday. So it's been about a week. And the first page is the cheat sheet. So we have eighteen camps. It's, it's from June nineteenth to, to July twentieth. And the, the, the great thing is, is are the camps are pretty, they're fully funded, in a sense. So we have Garrett money, and we have Perkins Grant money. And then, just thanks to everyone here, we have some district funds to help make it, to really make it for in-district students, there's no cost. The only cost is, is like your, your sports camps and trips camps. And the trips camp is really just, the cost is just to pay for the trips. So, I mean, they're, and they're just going to go on fun trips, it's a fun week. So they're here from eight to four, doing some team building, but they'll also go and just have fun, and, and go to different trips, go hiking, bowling, water parks, things like that. The, the cool thing was like a trips camp, sports camp, in, in our CTE, if this was like a Boys and Girls Club or a Y M C A, like if you were taking, the trips camp would cost you uh, between, between two-twenty-five and three-hundred dollars for the week, is what they would charge. You know, so your culinary camps, if we ran this in, in, down where you have like a summer Y or those type of programs, it would, it would cost you quite a bit. So we're offering this for no cost, majority of the camps, and we're offering transportation. So the, the students are going to be picked up at Lancaster at, at seven-twenty, Whitefield at seven-forty. We'll provide lunch for students that, that stay and take the bus home, or need a lunch, and then we will bus them back. Okay? So right now, we have twenty-five campers in one week, and sixty-six, sixty-six camper weeks. So those twenty-five kids have signed up for a total of sixty-six different, like, segments. After one week, so we're off to a really good start.
When do they have to apply by?
It's really first come, first served, but we're, it's open until the end of April, and then we're, if there's still spots, we're going to, we're going to look to open it up out of district to the schools that send, sending students, because it's middle school age, and it's a great way to promote our career and tech program. So our alternative ed piece, so we have the ELOs, we have the transition, trying to get our ninth graders, up, up on the right foot, in our summer camp, and then we have, we're really trying to, to reach out to the segment of the population who are struggling with traditional education. So, we're making a good So we're making a concerted effort to create personal learning plans for, for those students. It's typically like in math and English, trying to find them, you know, when they get to be juniors and seniors. You've, you've gotta create, uh, you've gotta find English assignments that fit the competencies. That are engaging to that segment. Cause they have, you know, Mr. Holt can talk about this probably better than I can. Where you get that segment, it is just hard to get them, Mr. Pines, get them hard, get them across that finish line. And at times you don't have the answers. So you've gotta, you start with Plan A and you end up with your fifth or sixth plan. So that's why those personal learning plans, they're time, you know, a lot of the time and energy into them. And they're not, they're not cut and dry. So we, we have like a subcommittee, teachers that are, that are looking at how we can, you know, better our, our, our alt world. Right now we kind of have the online learning, and we kind of want to try to make that more blended. And create some ELO, some practical experiences for that segment. IMPACT's been really good for it. Yeah, so IMPACT, that program's been great. Our students go, go there for half a year and get four and a half credits through the IMPACT program. And we're looking at other resources. You know, Mr. Barry is looking at academic assistants and space to create a, yeah, a, a more inviting environment. So our, our, the students aren't just on a computer all day long. We can do some other things to engage them. And then just kind of going, I'm not sure, you know, we may need to talk about what the summer program looks like next year. Cause I, I've gotten a lot of, there's been a lot of good, like, good feedback on that so far. Parents, a lot of emails saying they're, you know, they're very grateful that, that the district is, is looking at that middle-aged group, middle-aged school group. Cause you've got.
This is critical transition, usually.
And, and your, your rec departments ran your kids five or six. And then your middle, they don't wanna be there with like, you know, on the playground anymore.
DI role.
So that's, so we've created a space for them. Um, and I think that's my last slide. So any, any other questions?
I think it's a great program, and I think, you know, for folks that are immersed in education, the, the, the target outcomes and stuff are pretty clear. But it might be good to kind of state that for the parents that are signing their kids up here is what, what each of the programs are trying to achieve. If your kid attends, here's what we expect.
Sure. I'm wondering if it's, um, appropriate at this point, because to talk about that job description that has to do with the futures program. While we're, while you're standing here and how it fits into.
Sure, that was in Mike's.
I can, I can speak to that.
It's in your packet, everybody.
So we're obviously running our educational business differently. And, um, and for us, you know, if we ventured into ELO. You know, we went in there going, hey, there's gonna be, you know, some intended results, and there's gonna be some unintended results. And there's going to be things that we know, and then there's gonna be things that are created that are unknown. That we kind of go on this, on this journey of, of personalizing like education for kids as much as we can. And, and we want to do that work. And, um, and so one of the things is, you know, Mike, he has hit the ground running. And he has established a lot of connections locally within the district. But he's established, you know, connections for kids outside of the district. Um, he's now going to be presenting at a conference, you know, design studio conference in, in Nashville this, this summer. With like the ELO executive board, you know, for lack of a better term, and that's these three other people. And so the interesting thing about our program is we are as rural as any school do, trying to do ELOs. So we have our own types of like challenges, you know, and transportation is definitely one of those challenges. Managing the kids', you know, experience. So for every kid who hasn't experienced American, or excuse me, AMC. They're going to have to have a teacher on, on the other side of it, or an educator on the other side of it. To be the liaison between the school and the organization. And so we have kind of like logistics stuff and we have personnel stuff. So one of the things is we were budgeting for our, for our FTEs and, and within our budget. We want to kind of basically reallocate resources so we can create the jobs that we need. And one of the positions that we created, we have a position very similar to this, working at Culinary. Where it's like a CT kind of like facilitator, and is a person to aid the, the program. And, you know, we feel like we need a person, another person to aid the program within, you know, the program. To work with the businesses, to continue to establish connections, to work out transportation stuff with kids. Cause a lot of these kids that we're trying to get into the work, you know, places don't have transportation.
Do you mean actually transport kids themselves, this person?
Potentially. This person potentially will. It's gonna be kind of like a catch-all. The person gonna monitor online learning, you know, through BELAX and some Odyssey work programs. Um, so, you know, we just created a, a position with same, similar job description to the person at Culinary. But, and we feel like that is going to be a position here that is not limited to culinary. It's not gonna be limited to, it's, it's gonna be something that we are creating as opposed to teachers moving down the road. We will not likely thinking forward, need as many teachers to run this building. When we have kids earning credit through programs like these. But we do need people to be able to manage those. So for me, I actually think it's a bit more fiscally responsible, and it helps us, you know, personalize this. And, you know, we named it the college in, in career, you know, facilitator. Um, but it's gonna be someone who works with the businesses, works with Mike, monitors online learning. Develops individualized personal, you know, learning plans, personal learning plans.
Those, those certainly work in AMC program. Like, there, there's, there's, there's so many slides taken, it's one that's well. You've got a, you've got a lot of, a lot of our students wanting, you say, hey, what do you want to do? Well, 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 you know, like, okay, that's great. Now, now we gotta get to the next step. And I don't know if we're doing as a good a job as we can. To kind of get, to get them where they can have some of that, that experience, partly that you get his age requirement. So it's, when they're eighteen, it's a different ballgame. But even the job shadow or getting them, um, so they, so that they, they go see a shipyard. Or they go see volunteers in action, that kind of thing. So there's a, I've got, I've got five, um, I've got five writers, five, five, five girls that want either get in a marketing publication. They want to be an editor. They want to, they want to work in like, at a newspaper or, or, and, and they're dying to go see like the union leader. Or, you know, go see, see like a, a large newspaper operation, things like that.
So this person would bring them there, make contacts with the people there? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, the, what's happening now is we, you know, myself and, and, and what, and our, and who we connect, who's helping us in, in the guidance department. Are doing like the school, you've got the summer camp registrar, in a sense. Um, so, and I, I was gonna give you that. It's just you have, you, maybe you've got kids on emails, but like our, where you, where we can get really organized. So the person doing this would be part of their job description where, and, and just making those follow-up calls. Cause we get a lot of camp, we're getting a lot of camp calls right now in the sense of, hey, you know, tell us about this.
So one of the other things that we, we get, and, and, you know, this is kind of an awkward thing. We have lots of people looking for kids to help. You know, for volunteers, or I need this type of intern, or I need this, you know. And we are trying to, you know, present that to the kids as much as possible, like, hey, here's an opportunity. And we need a, uh, you know, people to assist in aligning opportunities with kids. And we need people, more people in communication with, you know, uh, the, the businesses and, and people in the North Country. Not just New Hampshire, but Northern Vermont and, and, and here. And basically kind of more boots on the ground. And, and believe it or not, this is, this is coming from like Tom Burke. These are conversations we had when we brought Tom Burke in to help redesign CTE. We were talking about the creation of these type of positions. And, uh, that are like liaisons from the school to the community, school to the colleges, school to, uh, you know, local people. That just need volunteers for, for a weekend. And, uh, it's one of those things that it's, it's a time-consuming process. And, and I know some of you've had some experience with this, you know, uh, directly in different roles that you've had. And, uh, we just need kind of, you know, more boots on the ground here. But I think, uh, within budget, the reallocation of resources, and I, I need it.
Well, I'd like to better understand the reallocation of resources, because there's a give and take with that. Is what you estimate the salary is gonna be and where that money's coming from?
Yep. So basically, you know, what I've asked is, I said, hey, I have this much FTE. I budgeted for thirty-eight point five-six FTEs. And I said, hey, this salary will be at X amount. I can't remember exactly what I, you know, put, this is what I need the salary to be at. What's the equivalent, Sheila, of how much FTE space? Do I need to free up to have that much salary to pay this position? So I'm not going over my thirty-eight point five-six. I'm just using the money within that, the FTE space to pay the salary of a non-teaching personnel, like a, a.
No, I, I understand all that, Mike, but I mean, when you get, when you went, when you came to us last year for the thirty-eight point five. In, in the budget, you had a mission and a requirement and a need for that thirty-eight point five. What's changed?
Uh, student demand. You know, we have STEAM program, you know, our STEAM academy that we're creating. Has seventy-six students enrolled in it. So you have seventy-six students, grades nine through twelve, not enrolled in, in, you know, the English classes, math classes, social studies classes. They're enrolled in STEAM. So you don't have as many sections for those required classes. And therefore you don't need as many English teachers, math teachers to teach those. Because of how we re, you know, how we have the STEAM program. The other piece that, you know, this, we tried to kind of like shoot, throw in darts a little bit in the dark. Our schedule was built off of student demand. And we're so, you know, transient, you know, and if you saw the postings, you saw, you know, we have some movement, we have some retirements. We have people taking different opportunities. You know, one of the things that's consistent here, and I, you know, I talk about Barack Obama and Marion all the time. I know we're always gonna have two or three openings. Someone's gonna move on, the demographics. I've hired a, a, a person, you know, big personality from Massachusetts that can work here for three or years or so. I'm always gonna have some, you know, fluid stuff. And so the benefit of that is we can play around when someone leaves. Do we actually need, you know, that full-time spot based on student demand, you know, for courses? And so an example of it is, we have some movement in the science department. I do not need as many science teachers as I have. So you will see us looking for like a point six, point eight science teacher, cause I don't need it, you know, um. And so we do that pretty regularly, you know, um. You know, if you notice years ago, we had an English department of, of six based on need. And now we have an English department based of, of, of four, you know? And so it's just based on where you need, what you're offering. Those years, a lot of kids were in electric classes, multiple DP sections, and now we don't have that as much. So it's, it's pretty fluid, but I try not to go over, you know, what I asked for in the fall. You know, I don't come back in the spring or the summer unless I absolutely have to, and I haven't in a long time, for additional staffing. But I think we can make it work.
So this wasn't initially budgeted back when the budget was done in December?
No.
Was there a thought of it, or?
There, there was thought of it because we created one position already like this, Culinary. We knew we would need these type of liaison positions, you know, and assistant position. We didn't know when, you know, and the ELO thing has been more successful than I anticipated. I did not imagine that we were going to have as many kids trying to dual enroll in White Mountain Community. As many kids signing up for ELO experience, because at this time last year, I, I think we had eight, eight or nine kids. You know what I mean? So this year now we're at forty. And then next year, I think we, you know, Mike's had, you know, like upper forties request. At, you know, an ELO where they get some sort of experience outside the walls of here. Not including the online stuff, not including the dual enrollment, not including the CTE piece to it. Um, so we knew who we needed, we just didn't know when. And, and so, like I mentioned, Tom Burke's name, if you guys do recall him. That was part of the redesign of like programs and sources. This conversation was had then and created, with his now Riley's position at Culinary.
Mike worked with Sheila at least six or seven sessions to ensure that the money was where it needs to be.
Well, that's good. No, no, I, I like the agility idea.
It's fluid, nimble.
But tonight we're approving the job description, not the position.
That's right. But I want you to understand what that job description, what it's like, because it's not usual, it's unusual.
Yeah, I mean, this is especially in education where the union's involved and everything else. It's just always that sensitivity of adjustments dynamically.
And this is a non-union position?
Right.
Yeah, but it's impacting union positions.
But that are based on, I'm not cutting any of those positions, or meaning the person that we're.
You're not cutting something for this. What you're doing is your attrition, just because of the numbers and, let's say, lack of signups.
For certain classes.
For certain classes.
And combining with people moving on, where you have a great deal of movement within, you know, some of the.
So it's really coming out of attritions was coming out of, okay.
Mr. Broder?
Mike's, who mentioned the fact that some kids are limited, they're limited on some of the job experiences through ages, eighteen and over.
Under.
Like, yeah, but some of the jobs they can't walk, okay? When I served in the youth, when I served on the State Apprenticeship Council, this is twenty, twenty-five years ago. There's, if you go to find somebody in the state Department of Labor, who runs the apprenticeship program. I don't know who that is at this point in time. But there was a, there was a regulation passed. If someone was involved in youth apprenticeship, they dropped the labor laws down. So that persons who were sixteen years and over did not have to be over there to work in certain trades and stuff. You gotta go ask the question. That might, that, I don't know anybody down there anymore, but the head of the State Apprenticeship Council usually is the director of, of the department.
Gotcha.
Okay? Do you still feel familiar with that?
Yeah, well, and, and I will. And, well, some of the pushback is not from like the Department of Labor, but it may be the companies.
Insurance. Yeah, millions of insurance, insurance and liability.
But they have to work and obey the state labor laws.
Sure.
They, children. But there is a mechanism to do that.
We'll look into it, definitely, for sure. So, um, I know I kind of went on and, you know, kind of tried to explain and justify. But are there any questions, you know, about the, the job description itself?
No, I think it's pretty clear. It's pretty well, you, as you, as I read this, pretty clear what this person's gonna be doing. And just a, just a statement, I think I made it, I've made it a couple of times. When you talk about the juniors and seniors who are not doing well in that traditional English and math class. My son Paul, the CTE has been all the difference in the world. I mean, if you would've told me last year, two years ago, Mike, when he was getting straight D's, straight sixties. As junior, he's gonna get four A's on his third quarter, I would, I would, I would've died. But he's now, as a junior, has been able to get into the CTE stuff, and it's making all the difference in the world for him. And, um, it's, it's why it's so important to do this.
And, and for us, it's about monitoring and accountability, you know, and trying to visualize it. It's, it's difficult to hold kids accountable and help monitor their learning when they're doing individual things. You know, they have individual schedules. And, um, so that's how, an example of quickly our school's kind of evolved in the, in the last two or three years. You know, we went from, you know, not having these opportunities to now, we have multiple ways to define an ELO. Because AMC gives us some liberty, and we have, you know, multiple pathways that kids can take. And they can go D and CTE, some AP classes, and have a job. And they can go D and CTE, some AP classes, and have a job shadow. And some people do online learning at the same time. So you have like four different kind of like components and worlds that probably wouldn't have existed three or four years ago here. And it just, we just have to staff it differently, you know. And so we're trying to be flexible, we're trying to be transparent with it. You know, we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can. And, you know, any suggestions or ways to do this, I'm open to it, you know.
Well, I think the agility, everything about it, it all sounds good. But I think just like with the other program, as it's communicated to the public is outcomes. Is we're doing this because here's what we expect to achieve and, you know, the better preparation for the kids. The kids are, you know, and educate the public that how kids learn is changing.
Yeah, and if someone asks me, you know, listen aside, you know, hey, how do you define student achievement? When we fill out grants, we get that question asked to us like all the time. How do you define student achievement? And for me, you know, it's really like, when kids leave here, are they able to be successful at what they want to be successful at when they're, you know, leaving here? That's, I don't really care what that is, two-year, four-year school, workforce, internship, gap year. And the answer to me is not enough of them. You know what I mean? Because they, the gap is not so much their content or their GPAs or SAT scores. Their gap is how can they navigate the social expectations, the, you know, the work expectations, the expectations of a coach at the college level, the expectations of a professor who hasn't known you since you were six years old. You know what I mean? Like, how do you navigate those things? And I think we got, providing these opportunities for our kids helps us close that gap. Because it puts them in dealing with a third party who is not us.
You're disrupting the blank.
Yeah, so that's really important for us. And so this is our attempt at it, and we'll just kind of keep plugging away at it.
Can I just end on a cool little story? So, because here's just kind of a quick example of Cal Futures. So, you know, this year we've made a nice connection with Trivida in Lancaster. And we've had a student go and intern. And we brought a group that might be in the production piece of their company. They had a field trip. And then I've heard that they have internships in the summer. So I got word that there was a marketing and promotion internship today. So I asked like our, like our top marketing, and she wants to be a graphic designer. And she is like really talented. She actually, she created the cover. And she did the Booster Club golf brochure. And she did the play poster. So she is like, so I emailed HR and said, hey, I hear you about the marketing. And so I pitched it to her, and she was kind of like, oh, okay, Mr. Curtis. I said, but you got to tell me in twenty-four hours or someone's going to take it. And then she chased me down a half hour later and said, okay, can you, can you get put in a good word for me? So I emailed HR, and that's kind of, so I'm kind of hearing back, and she's going to apply tonight. But that's just kind of one of the many stories where, because you kind of have like a name to kind of what we're, this, what we're doing here. So kids are starting to understand what it's about, how it can help open doors. I just want, that was today's story.
And the marketing becomes really important for our businesses as well. When they know that they have a central contact person specifically for how they might grow their own employees down the road, they become more willing to then engage the school and find kids who can take those slots. But if they don't know who they're going to contact, then they sort of toss it out into the ether and hope somebody hears about it.
Right. And then what they're hoping is, and she's great, so hopefully that works out. She has a great summer. When she comes back from college in December, and they have, their employees are taking Christmas holiday. They want her to come to the mill here to kind of keep the bar, you know, keep it going. So that's where it can, where it can help the company too. Thank you.
You don't have to convince me. In the seventies, used to call it work site. And that was a, that was a way to stop the dropouts. It was dropout prevention. And I was teaching tech and huck them, and they had forty kids out on the job site. I did my afternoons driving around looking at. When I was in that office across the hall as the AP, as the book director, I had twenty-five out. And it's so valuable.
Please, you can see the vans out Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Yeah. None of us show much.
Thank you.
Next we have Brent Holt giving us a special ed update.
I'll also give my endorsement to the futures program. I, in the last board report, I'm not sure you look at too many details, but the numbers of our other district placements are significantly less than the state average. The number of kids that we send to specialty schools, on a special ed IP or residential IP. So we've done well, but some of those that could still remain are very expensive ones. And I think a lot of times in my brain is, could we better do a better job locally? And it's not, the child may need special education, it's that they need an alternative way to learn. And these are young people who are going to be citizens in our community. It's not, they're going to be here with us. So I think if we can include them in something that's more flexible and responsive and personalized, I think we really have an opportunity. You know, we can't, you know, we can't go too quickly into it without thinking about it. Really, the potential is there. I'm coming to you to talk about, there is another job, I'm going to talk about two things primarily. There is another job description that you'll be reviewing. And it's a part-time job description for early childhood education coordinator in the district. And this has come out of, the need has really been identified partially because of the Systems of Care Grant, which a big part of that is early childhood education and improving the social emotional outcomes of children prior to them getting to kindergarten. And then their future outcomes of, so really the preschool and what they get even from birth on up to their early learning is really critical. We're only, what's happening is, for me and for other people, we're still working really hard with the COS Coalition for young children and families. And that work is really ramped up now. And there's another summit scheduled for kindergarten teachers, private preschool providers, and our public preschool people for May. And we have started meeting regularly in the community. So we have an SAU thirty-six connects group. Burling has one, Gorham has one, SAU seven, Colebrook, that area, and then SAU fifty-eight in Groveton. So they're meeting on a regular basis. And what we really need is somebody who can really move that forward. We're proposing, looking at a halftime position for this year. It'll all be grant funded, so it's not using district funds. So the nice thing is we're using, again, federal dollars to meet a need at the local level. And we're looking, I can use some, and you see in the job description, we need to do a better, excuse me, better job of child find, which is a legal requirement based on federal and state laws, which is going out and finding children in our district who may need special education, and they have distinct needs. So I really envision this as really getting out to the pediatricians, someone who can go out, work with pediatricians, work with the family resource center, with the home visitors who go out into the homes, because not all our children go to preschools. So really reaching out to the medical fields and the agencies, DCYF. So that's one, half of that funding would come out of IDA funds to really ramp up our child find efforts. Because right now, we're just doing an advertisement in the paper and doing developmental screenings at the schools in the spring for preschool children. And we're really not going out finding, we're inviting. And I think this will be a big improvement. Because we do want to find those children who are at risk for, you know, social emotional regulation issues coming into school in their future. The other piece would be more looking at title funding to really do that collaborative work with the COS Coalition for young children and families. We're also, we will be applying for another grant, which is a, just, the RFP was just released today, which has to do with community-wide work with the pyramid model, which is a multi-tiered systems support, just like RTI and the multi-tiered system support for behavior, which was PBIS. And there's a pyramid model that actually is best framework for best practices in early childhood education. And it doesn't provide any personnel, but it provides a lot of technical assistance. It's for professional development coaching. And it's not just for our public preschools, but it's for every, every center, home visitors and everything that they'll participate in best practices so that it'll be consistent. I don't know if we'll apply as a, it has to be a community coalition. So I don't know if we use it, our SAU thirty-six coalition, or whether that might be something we use the COS Coalition and make it a county-wide effort. And I always feel like, you know, the more good we can spread, these are children that, you know, move and are very mobile. And families are mobile, so I think we'll have some discussions. So this person would be that, you know, whoever we would hire against that position. And that hopefully explains that job description, why we're adding that. The second thing I wanted to speak to is that, we're going to, you'll see an advertisement for another school psychologist. It's really, what's, what has happened is that we're at a point now where the school psychologist currently only has time to test and hand off reports and attend meetings, and then she's on to the next evaluation. And that's really not the value of school psychologists. And there was a time in this district where there were two psychologists. That was before my, before my return. But then when I got back here, we had a full-time psychologist and we were contracting through North Country Education Services for contracted psychologists who then just came in the district, did an evaluation, sent the report in, didn't even attend the meeting. So there's no family involvement, no training of teachers, coaching of the interventions. And we have an opportunity now. Tamara Usman is, and I'll say this for the record, is our school psychologist right now. Is immensely talented, and we're not using her skills to the level that we really could. She actually is a reading specialist on top of being a psychologist and also a learning disability specialist. And is really expert at taking those, any sort of evaluation results and creating learner profiles. Or if she can then match, you know, the intervention to the type of, you know, learner that they are. And then what's been happening in the schools, and it's bothered me for quite a while, is we, special education is supposed to be specialized for specially designed instruction for students based on their learning profiles. But we haven't been matching, you know, what Tamara just hands off the testing results, tries to, you know, tell people the direction, but can't then support and coach, whether it's a special ed teacher or even a regular teacher in the classroom, and then also the paraprofessionals. So we have, you know, trimmed some of the paraprofessional staff, but we have a really solid group of paraprofessional staff right now. And part of their, what they need to be doing is moving that into the classrooms when they're with the students and following up with those interventions. My need now is if I add, and this will come out of IDA funds. I have room in the IDA grant. So again, that will not come out of local dollars. And, you know, I could use the money to buy Chromebooks for kids, you know, to use, but I don't think that's the money well spent. It really needs to go to services that really make a difference for children. So adding a psychologist, I'd like to add somebody. Tamara's strength is really in learner profiles and kids with learning disabilities. She's also very talented with behavior, but she doesn't have time to support any of the school teams to do that. So she's just running from one school to the next. If I could add somebody, I'd like to find, actually, it doesn't even have to be somebody who's expertly trained in the behavioral side and the mental health side to complement Tamara, but someone who has a passion for that. Because I wouldn't mind just getting somebody right out of graduate school who has that kind of passion, that what they want to do in their career, and I can train that. And I'll make sure they get the appropriate training to support the children that we're identifying in our multi-tiered systems of support who need behavior interventions. And their specially designed instruction, we don't, I mean, it's kind of like we assess kids and we say they need, you know, support in reading, and then just walk, you know, we would never walk away, we give them reading interventions. We assess kids who may have executive functioning issues, like kids with attention deficit disorder, or kids with emotional disabilities who have emotional regulation issues. And yet I look at the IEPs and I look at where's the specially designed instruction. And it's usually just accommodations or have, give them apparel so they can follow them around. And that's not addressing the skill deficits. And so I want this person, just like Tamara does, to be able to really help teachers and staff and then coach them after that's been designed, to be able to follow through on that. So I just wanted you to be aware of that's where that's coming from. And I think the last piece.
You bring that up later, you're not, that's not tonight.
Yeah, that one we don't need a job description for. Yeah, that one we already have a current one that we can use. So that was just, that's more informational. The decision-making one will be the early childhood education job description. But I do want you to know that there's a real solid reason, that kind of strategy behind adding that second person.
I understand, and I agree with you.
Oh, thank you, yeah. And the other thing I just wanted you to wear is that we are, we're also identifying the need that we, that has talked about the special ed service delivery model. And that I really believe we need to fit the learner profile or the behavior profile to the interventions. And why the psychologists, these two should be supporting that. We are looking at a model two where we have changed the model. Lancaster Elementary School has had a building coordinator for special education. That's not happening in any other buildings. It's just, that's been an artifact that's remained over the years. And we made a decision at our staffing time that we need to make it consistent that we don't need the building coordinator as much, because that's more of a clerical role. And we need that special education teacher back with children in the classrooms. And she'll still be like a head of department and support the teachers. But what was happening is that, and I got to, I get the rationale that at one point they thought it'd be better not to have special ed teachers do the special ed paperwork and spend more time with children. There's two problems with that. The caseload's built, so all of a sudden they've got thirty-some kids on their caseload, which is not manageable, or twenty-some that they're teaching. And so we need to really get someone back in the classroom. And the other issue is that part of the recertification requirements for special ed teachers is they have to show competence in the development of IEPs. If they're not writing their own IEPs, I'd have a hard time signing off saying they're showing competence in that area. So I just wanted you aware that we're going to push out, because of that, we're going to push out a lot of professional development again. Because I think, you know, if we have high expectations of people, we have to have high levels of support. And we're going to find ways to not only train for effective specially designed instruction, but also the paperwork compliance. Now, we need to go back and look at state monitoring requirements for special ed. And that's something that won't cost us anything, it's just being smarter about doing it. Because the people from the Bureau of Special Education at the state level will come out and train the teachers for free. And we just have to do some early releases, probably six of those, to hit the critical parts and then continue to coach that as time goes on.
Want to talk a little bit about the data analysis that we did?
Oh, yeah, and I think the other piece that drove the decision to move and put all the directions that we did do in moving the, you know, the building coordinator and really getting that person back in the classroom, and also to give more supports for teachers through psychologists, is that we got our S-SPAC, Smarter Balance Scores back. And we were doing an initial data analysis, and the DLT got together, and we did a structured data analysis and walked it through a protocol. And in looking at it, what we're seeing is that relative to the state of New Hampshire, other states with IEPs, in New Hampshire, our district relatively is not doing as well as the rest of the state. I'm not saying they're not making progress, because we have to use other data points to look at that, like EMOS scores and DIBELS. But what is concerning is that one of the, you know, one of the hypotheses that DLT came to was, you know, the need for more professional development of the staff. And they're not getting the supports, and possibly the interventions aren't matching what the students' needs are. But that data protocol was really helpful when we started looking for that. Any questions you might have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll report, I'll report back to let you know how things are going.
Okay, committee reports. Jessica put the names down next to the committees. So if you have any questions about that, see Jessica. Educational programming is Scott and George and Kristen. Facilities is myself, Randy and Ryan, Jessica. Personnel stays the same, it's Randy, myself, and Jessica. Policy is Jessica and Kristen. Safety is George, and Jessica will be the alternate. And she did leave me a note that any committee that has just one representative from the board, it would be nice if someone would volunteer to be an alternate. So...
I can do that.
In case that person didn't meet, yeah, speak to Jessica about it, because she's in charge of the committee. And strategic planning, of course, is Randy and Scott. Okay, and the other note she left me was to make sure that if you're the chair of the committee, to get an agenda, be responsible for an agenda being presented, whether you do it or however, but it's presented. And also make sure that minutes are timely turned in to the office. Okay, because I know my committee had trouble with that last year. We went sometimes a couple of weeks. They should be in within a couple of days. So, any questions about this? Comments? Okay, advisory committees, the athletic advisory committee is Scott.
We didn't meet last week, so...
You didn't meet last week. And, oh, curriculum meets the third Wednesday, which is next week, correct?
No, it got canceled. It was supposed to be this week, I think, and then it got, it got canceled.
Okay. No, I'm thinking, Facilities, I'm sorry. We meet on the third Wednesday, so it's already been scheduled, and you should have an agenda.
We're still waiting for a schedule.
I sent the agenda to you and make sure that you look it up.
Oh, but when did you send it?
Today.
Okay.
Before I, Mr. Edward did the agenda, I sent it to you to look it over before I sent it out to the other members.
I didn't check this afternoon, so...
Okay.
It takes sometimes a day for me to get it. All right, my internet's not the fastest. Okay, and the CTE renovation advisory committee is myself. And I forget what day we're meeting on now. Scott's not here, is he? It's April.
Eighteenth, eighteenth at one thirty to three o'clock.
So I get to go home and eat from one committee and come back from the next one. Unfinished business, the Jefferson property. There was a letter, it was sent out to the Board of Sovereign, right?
Yes.
And I believe they received it, what I was told today was by the...
Does everybody have a chance to read that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So they're just, as soon as they receive it, in agreement, they'll have the town attorney and our attorney draw up the paperwork, the D.
I believe they're discussing it tonight.
At the select meeting, yes.
Okay. New business? Okay, so we're up to the action agenda items. The first one is accept the following nominations. Valentina Tyrena? How do you say that?
Tyrena.
Tyrena. I'm going back to the French name, it's a lot easier. Okay, that's special ed ESLO Title I teacher, Jefferson, effective June twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Do I have a motion?
Allo.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
With appreciation.
With appreciation. All those in favor? Okay, action agenda item number two, to approve the following administrative nominations for eighteen nineteen. Jacob Hess, Assistant Principal, White Mountains Regional High School, salary sixty-five thousand. Do I have a motion?
Allo.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And once again, action agenda three, to approve the following teacher nominations for eighteen nineteen. Kim Dormin, science teacher, White Mountains Regional, salary thirty-four thousand five hundred, step OVA. Mark Selman, art integrationist. White Mountains Regional, salary fifty thousand dollars, step ten, that's a masters. Do I have a motion?
And so moved.
Second. Discussion?
Mike, can you just fill us in on those two? Yep, Kim Dormin is currently a member of the TRRE program here, through UNH. She's been interning with Melissa Jellison for this school year. She's currently having a spell at Lancaster as a part of that internship. She's from Pittsburgh, really well-received here by kids, well-endorsed by people at UNH. Really pleasant. You know, part one, I think if, you know, we went through and I didn't know her, you know, she would be a strong candidate. The fact that she went part of this program, she interned here. She's already coming in, kind of like not as a first-year teacher, like she knows where the bathrooms are. She knows where to get the paper, you know what I mean? Like she knows kind of how we do things in the culture, and is like a no brainer. I think that's the purpose of that program. And so, so super excited and pleased about her.
She's commended from Pittsburgh?
Yep. And that was the conversation piece, and I people do that. She's not the only one that we have from Pittsburgh. And she thought about it, and they're going to make it work as a family.
Good.
And, you know, because of that program, we're going to be, at this school, we'll have two, possibly three other interns next year, which I don't mind. I think it's good, and we have a great relationship with them. And so we have that. And then Mark Selman, as I indicated, he's a super experienced teacher, really creative, can do, you know, graphic designs and painting and digital stuff and stuff, you know, stuff with computers, and lives in Littleton, look into, you know, kind of be over in this area, and just brings a lot to the table based on his, you know, years, you know, teaching in New York and in Vermont. And he was really well-received at his school. You know, he's one of the, in their opinion, you know, leaders of their building. And to me, I don't think you typically find that in art teachers, where someone who's an art teacher is like the leader of, you know, on curriculum teams and competency in the education stuff. So really excited, he came up twice, you know, with us, interacting with kids, with us. That pool was crazy, crazy competitive.
Our teacher pool?
Yeah, our integrationist pool, crazy competitive. Very pleased with that candidate and the other candidates that we met, you know. So very excited about that. So we're really excited, you know, the last, we're way ahead of the game right now. We brought in a teacher at the last school board meeting, we brought in a couple today.
How many more are you expecting to?
I need a science, physics, you know, physical science teacher. And I think...
You have a part-time art integrationist as well?
Yeah, I have, I'm going to point four. It'll work directly with the STEAM program and the humanities program. So I have that coming down. I have humanities teacher that we, that was the first position actually we interviewed for and found a candidate. And she's coming up April sixteenth and seventeenth to spend some time with us, you know, you know, doing more professionally developing. So after she has that face-to-face with Dr. Anastasia, I hope to bring back her. Really excited about her. The art integrationist, and then that physical science one, that's going to be a grind, I'm not going to lie to you. That one's going to be tough, Phil. It'll be a tough ask.
Yep.
So we'll have to see what we can do there. But hopefully, hopefully that's it. It's a lot of work, you know, to go through that process. So.
Good.
And Roxanne, she can do a lot of paperwork fast. So I saw there's some type of, yeah, it's my fault.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, to ratify the agreement for the use of premises for the motorcycle rider education program between the state and New Hampshire Department of Safety, Division of Motor Vehicles, and the White Mountains Regional School District, signed by Marion Anastasia Superintendent Schools on two fourteen eighteen. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
We haven't had this here for a while, right?
This is just a new agreement.
It's a new agreement, because my granddaughter went through the program.
I know, they've always had it, and I haven't seen it in a while.
We just didn't do this, another agreement.
Okay.
All those in favor? Unanimous. To approve the following job descriptions, the college and career transitional facilitator, Futures Program, early childhood educational coordinator. Do I have a motion?
Allo.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. To approve the school board meeting dates for the school year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Do I have a motion?
Do you guys see them?
Yeah, they're in the packet.
Oh, they're in the packet.
They're in the packet, yep.
They want a calendar. No, it's my cell phone.
You can put it in here.
Do I get a motion on that?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? And to approve the teacher renominations for the school year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, as recommended by the Superintendent Schools. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, you got that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Scott?
I have to abstain.
Abstain, okay. One abstention. And then we have action agenda number eight, to approve the following support staff nomination. Torini Scanzila, paraprofessional, White Mountains Regional, salary eleven seventy-three an hour, step one BA. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. No public input, right? No public input. We don't need a non-public. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You want me just to adjourn? No, you can adjourn, you don't need a motion.
Yeah, we used to... Okay, all members, Jessica asked me to go over these, I'll just bring them up at the end here. Okay, all members should sign and return the ethics policy for the new year and return it to Roxanne. Okay.
Did we have a PO slip to sign tonight?
Manifest, no.
No, there was no manifesto.
There's going to be one coming to the...
She was on vacation.
I'll be back today.
Okay.
And at the next meeting on April thirtieth, we will have a non-public to go over Marion's superintendent report. Okay?
Sounds good.
So you're adjarring, are you going to adjourn?
Yeah.
And we'll see everybody in a couple days.
Next thing, I expect all you guys to have your suits on.